Just a simple question. How would you suggest I vote? Show courage and vote for the plan against your wishes, or vote against and fail my ward and your residents?
I'm not a gantsy gantsy, so I wouldn't pretend to tell you how you should vote. However, what I would want to know is, have you thought of the other consequences? Are there unintended consequences in this local plan that you as a group have not thought of? Because I believe they are, and I actually believe that Oakham will suffer as a result of this local plan, not benefit. You have a town centre that is devoid of business, that is about to go quiet. How will your residents feel if Oakham Town Centre goes quiet? Uppingham Town Centre goes quiet because there is a town centre being built at St George's, there is a settlement there which attracts more business. I think you need to consider other considerations such as that.
Do you have a supplementary?
I would just like to assure my resident and Mr Johnson, I have considered the options, and I've also taken the opportunity to read the local plan. As you intimated earlier, we may not have all done, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other councillors, please, if you can indicate. I see, sorry, councillor, you're doing this to your honour, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, I left it as long as I could. By way of question, a reply, I respect everyone who comes here to speak, I know it isn't easy. I think for this particular gentleman, it might be easier than for some others who I've spoken to a bit before. You said here, rise above party loyalties. Do you agree with me that there are three political groups on this council? Should they all follow your word? Would it be helpful if we had a recorded vote at the end, so we could see who voted to put development on greenfield sites?
I've been around the block long enough and far enough several times to know the way that things get done in businesses as well as in public sector organisations. So, do I believe that people aren't grouped into parties and talk in those groups? Then, of course I believe that. Do I believe that all parties should think in the same way? Yes, I do, because you are collectively a council, but you are representatives of your constituency or your ward. So, I mean, I'm not presuming to tell you that vote, but I do believe that there is party influence, and it will vary from issue to issue. I think this issue is particularly a target for party influence, which I'm worried about.
I mean, very briefly, are we talking party or are we talking a group? It happens to have the title of a political group, but really it's a group. So, is it party politics or just a group that you're talking about?
I'm talking about any group, I'm talking about any cohort that gets together, that plans separately and tries to create a bloc. I think you're individuals, I think you're collectively a council. And I don't necessarily think on something as important as this that you should be tied to other loyalties other than your individual view. And I worry that you will be swayed, and I don't disagree. I'm not talking about any particular party. I am worried that there are different people who influence in different ways on this council. And there are examples, I have no doubt, of some, you know, backdoor conversations going on, which we talked about by Neil earlier on. I know everybody thinks I'm...
Well, we only have thirty seconds, I don't think we can do that, councillor.
Just the same, Mr Chair, there are six independents who aren't asked to go to meetings before elections and explain why they want to stand as a candidate. They have stood simply as independents, and that is how they're going to be voting this evening, thank you.
Thank you, councillor, so that's a statement. I think we're out of time, so thank you very much. The next deputation is from Mr James Torquay-Persia, representing Mr PJSR.
Thank you, Chair, councillor. I'm Jethu Bercher, I appear on behalf of the Wolfhox planning and tourism promoter to take the statements. The councillors face with one of the most difficult decisions of the new decade tonight, whether to approve the draft local plan for further consultation and then submission to Secretary of State. Last week, this council voted to defer the decision on the HIF, tied to St George's Barracks site, and this evening, my clients submit that the council should similarly defer the decision to allow the draft local plan to proceed until the council has taken further steps outside of the road. This deputation follows two letters which were consented to you on the eighteenth of December and the fifteenth of January, and they're attached separately. Councillors will be aware of the allocations in George's Barracks, it's intended to deliver 1,000 homes after 2036, and that represents over half of the council's target in the housing planning period. So, such reliance upon strategic science should raise two questions. Is it the best location for development at this scale? And can the site realistically deliver this amount of homes? At the present time, neither question can be answered securely in the affirmative. As a location, the council will be aware of the serious concerns expressed by the local community as a developer at this scale in this location. And as we set out in our December and January letters, there are significant transport and traffic concerns, including third-party ownership of access land, and environmental concerns with respect to potential impact on the Rockland region. Delivery, any delay in delivery with strategic science will place the council at serious risk in respect to its housing supply, particularly in the light of the government's national policy framework. But the council will be aware of progressive reductions to the amount of housing that this site can bring forward, and that's because development of the site will plainly be complex, including the need to resolve those third-party land ownership issues, to carry out further site investigation, and above all, to ensure that the site is genuinely viable. For as long as there remain doubts as to both location and delivery, the council must fully consider all reasonable alternatives, including the allocation of additional to the new sites. And the PTTP report commissioned by the council confirms that Wolfhox is one such reasonable option to be invested fully through the planning process. My clients have been working with the council for several years seeking to accommodate additional allocation at Wolfhox. It can deliver 2,000 final new homes in the planned period with an allocation of an area equivalent to providing at least 7,500 houses alongside the elements I've set out below. This is a site with no major constraints, and if it's allocated, it could start to deliver housing and jobs as early as 2023, 2024. Significant technical work has already been undertaken. I list below the highest work, the middlest work, the last state work, and the vibrancy work. But contrary to recent representations that's quickly committed, my clients have made clear the provisions strategic reds associated with the site adjacent to A1.
I think actually you lost script starting from that, which is...
Yes, Chair, because I'm not missing, there are already ones set out there, and of course, I'm not adding anything to the text outside of that. If I could then proceed, Wolfhox is available, it's achievable, it's developable, it delivers high-quality new houses. The local planning allocation process will subject the local plan to detailed screening. The inspector appointed by the Secretary of State for Housing and his local government will require robust evidence that the draft local plan is positively repaired, justified, perfected, and consistent with national policy. And as I've said in the past, there is insufficient information in respect of St George's Barracks to be confident that it can meet those tests. It's essential that local planning processes are taken in a fair and transparent manner. My clients respectfully submit the councillors must be given all the relevant and necessary information prior to the decision of this magnitude, which will have consequences well into the next decade. The risk of the council in our cases to local planning inspector responding to many objections identified by the planners' premise on a strategy that is fundamentally flawed is the inspector is not satisfied that SGB is the right location and can deliver, and the local plan has insufficient flexibility to adapt to the site's status. I set out below my views on such interventions and the application of our solvers.
Thank you, members, questions? Councillor Bailey.
Thank you, Chair. So, thank you for that. I just want to ask you a few questions about the mineral surveys. When do you plan to carry out the detailed assessment that Northampton Street Council lapping the agents from the mineral planning authority said is needed to establish the excavator tips of stone and crushed limestone under that? Our understanding from the historical boreholes said between twenty and twenty-five metres of limestone underneath the site, and those surveys need to be carried out in advance.
Well, councillor, thank you very much for that question. It's a typical question and it's actually these specifics. We're very happy to run the council in specific dates, all components in which you fall. Specifically, my instructions at the present time should I say to paragraph fourteen, there's four whole work across the site which has identified limited constraints in particular respect to the tipper limestone. And moreover, we understand that looking at the national survey, there is sufficient information at present time to understand that when that work is undertaken, we understand that work can take place in the near or medium future. But that work ultimately will reveal there are no constraints in respect of minerals in respect of Wolfhox.
Do you have supplementary?
I do have supplementary. A little bit surprised by your response, because your client said they launched a survey in June 2018, and that survey seemingly hasn't carried out. Now, if I refer you to the MPPS, which you have seen, page fifty-eight, two oh four C, safeguard mineral resources by defining mineral safeguarding areas and adopting appropriate policies so that no locations of mineral resources of local or national importance are not sterilised by non-mineral development where this should be avoided, whilst not creating the assumption that the resources defined will be worked. So, without that additional boreholes to understand the limestone, the tipper stone underneath, this is simply not right.
Councillor, in response, there is a question here that two contrasting issues in respect of vibrancy. As I've set out, there are serious concerns about the vibrancy at St George's Barracks site that have not been resolved at the present time. As to Wolfhox and the work that's required in respect of boreholes and the further survey work carried out, which confirm the view taken by my clients, that the national survey alone indicates that are unlikely to be issues. The issues are ultimately here, are on a time scale. We say that St George's Barracks cannot show that it is viable at the present time. In respect of our site, if tonight, the decision is taken to defer the local plan, the decision to sell that local plan to consultation, then further information can be brought forward within that window. And we say, after the present time, in certain circumstances, the council has taken no decision on if funding proceeds. Bearing in mind that that is said to be central to St George's Barracks, that this council does not have the information necessary to proceed to any decision to send this plan to consultation and then submission.
Thank you, I have councillor's result.
So, evening. I just want to explore a bit of your numbers. Before I do that, I may listen to some interesting comments tonight, and I'm sure you've done a great deal of work throughout Rutland on your numbers and on the great county we live in. I'm interested, therefore, why you believe that the people of Rutland who have expressed their concerns tonight would be interested in a development of seven and a half thousand houses, when they don't want one for two and a half thousand houses? I'd be interested in your comments.
Councillor, thank you very much for your question. We say, 2,500 houses within the planned periods is what our allocation will cover. In respect of the 7,500, that obviously takes us to the next planned period. In respect of that scale, that scale stems from the sustainability of the site, located adjacent to the A1, in a location which can provide real, cross-border regional benefits in respect of locating houses in that location, which can also provide further houses for people consistent with the council's usage operate. It is not therefore a question of 7,500 within this planned period as against the quonson of St George's Barracks. It's the question ultimately whether St George's Barracks, as I frankly, can genuinely deliver the 2,000 houses that are set to be, can provoke, within the planned period at all.
Sorry, we are out of time, councillor. Mr Bercher, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm now going to... Members, I would now call the sixth deputation, which is Mr Cliff Bacon, on behalf of the CBRE Rutland. Mr Bacon. Your floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, can you hear me? The future of Rutland as a place for people to live means that a strategic plan for Rutland up to 2036 is a very significant document. So, getting it right is far more important than continuing to follow a totally unrealistic and unnecessarily truncated timetable. It has taken RCC over two and a half years to come forward with a completely different spatial strategy to the one set out in its July 2017 local plan. You, the councillors, have been given just over two weeks, I believe, to study and understand a nine-hundred-and-sixty-page document, fifty-seven megabytes on the computer, which fundamentally changes Rutland forever. You are also asked to assess its long-term impacts and are now being asked to vote on it. Does that make sense to you? The proposed change of the settlement pattern in Rutland will, over time, have a bigger impact on conditions of life in this county than anything that has been contemplated over the past fifty years and more. It pushes Uppingham into third place in terms of size of settlement. It must be reconsidered most carefully and involving the fullest and most transparent processes of public engagement. You are individually responsible, as councillors, for the outcome of this. Your legacy and reputation are on the line if this plan leads to wider mass development in Rutland, as many planning experts believe it will. By rushing this through to public consultation tonight, unforeseen disasters are far more likely to occur than if you stop it now and pause for thought. We keep hearing about MOD Treasury targets. But why on earth should the smallest county in England be expected to deliver such huge numbers to meet national targets? Way out of scale with the area into which these are being asked to fit. The SGB should at most be expected to deliver a few hundred new dwellings, perhaps eventually up to a maximum of 500, not 2,215, let alone the threat of considerably more than that. It is RCC's...
I think you moved off your deputation size. My question was moved on, sorry.
I've just taken a few words out because I realized that I've shorted time, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, carry on.
Yes, thank you, thank you. It is RCC's job as a strategic unitary authority carrying all the weight of the local planning authority to ensure that this does not happen. An independent inspector would surely listen very carefully and pay very close heed to arguments defending Rutland in that way. Furthermore, it is the MOD's problem to meet the remediation costs and utility costs which should have been built into their initial calculations relating to the closure of the facility in the first place, not to try to impose an unnecessarily high level of development on Rutland to offset their own responsibilities. Consulting now on the local plan with such a degree of uncertainty would be both highly dangerous and premature. Once further critical information about the terms and conditions of the HIF bid become known and fully understood, these may not be acceptable to Rutland, and the full council decide not to accept them. Then this would undermine the whole revised local plan. So, it could prove a huge waste of money and resources to consult on the local plan now. Are you, councillors, prepared to gamble with other people's money? What about the unintended consequences of this plan? The promotion of a new settlement has already opened the door to Wolfhox, where anything up to 10,000 new dwellings could happen. In essence, the totally different spatial strategy has created a scenario which you cannot control and could well result in much more development in Rutland than is either sustainable or required. Describing SGB as a brownfield land does not take away the need to make policy choices. In particular, the location element is played down. But it does matter, especially in rural areas where brownfield land is not close to major settlements, where there's almost no existing employment opportunities nor public services. Please, councillors, pause...
Sorry, you are indeed out of time, so I think you've made a call there. We will now go to questions. Are there any questions, please, members? I can see no questions, correct. Thank you, all. Sorry, councillors, you must help me by indicating very clearly, sorry, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, apologies. I just wanted to clarify, because in my ward in 2017, Spatial Cottlesmore, the parish council were not happy or the community happy with the site. So, I appreciate the contention over the brownfield side. But how do I reckon and speak to my ward members over the fact that green fields around my ward will need to be dug up if we don't agree with the local plan?
Thank you, councillor. Mr Bacon.
That's working?
That's working.
Councillor, thank you. My contention is that if this local plan, as it now stands, goes out to consultation, it will most definitely open up the opportunity for other major developments in Rutland. This is the view, very, very clearly, of a fair number of very experienced retired planning officers that I know. So, my point is this, that if this present local plan goes through, we won't just be talking about St George's, we'll also be talking about sites which were determined as viable and acceptable in the 2017 local plan review, sites which only three years ago were considered proper sites. The owners of those sites will, of course, consider them still proper. Why should the county council change their mind so much in three years? And we know in Cottlesmore, don't we, that there's a site for some 70 houses, which was in the 2017 local plan review, and is not in this review, but developers are still looking at it and surveying it, so they're going to bring it forward. And that proves very clearly what I'm trying to say, that by adopting this local plan, we are opening up Rutland to huge major development. And I would suggest to you that a much more sensible way forward was to go back to the 2017 local plan review with the spatial strategy and settlement hierarchy that that contained, and to look again, three years later, at the potential sites which should be allocated, smaller sites in the Oakham, Uppingham, and in the larger villages. You'll get much more than you bargained for if this local plan goes through now. You'll get the ones in 2017, plus St George's, plus Wolfhox, very likely. That's my view.
I need to rush on. Secondary, please, councillor.
Thank you, so just to be clear, sorry, so you're saying, because obviously, that you are right, it is, our residents are particularly concerned with the fact that surveyors are on that field. And yet, it seems to be you're saying that we should go back and if I vote against this and the 2017 plan, go back to the 2017 plan, then those houses will be built because there's a planning authority who won't be able to stop them. That's what you're in effect saying, because it's within that 2017 framework.
No, I'm not making myself clear, councillor. What I am saying is, the 2017 local plan review, the vision, the spatial strategy, and the settlement hierarchy were a natural extension of what has been proposed for Rutland over the last thirty years. They were sensible, the spatial strategy and the settlement hierarchy. What I'm saying is...
We are out of... Thank you, Mr Bacon, we are now out of the ten-minute time. Thank you, thank you very much. Now, members, I would like to call Mr Richard Drabbe as a resident of Wissendine. Mr Drabbe, thank you. And Mr Drabbe, of course, is asking a question, I understand, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, respected officers and councillors, this question relates to the historic landscape and heritage asset at Wissendine, W H I O nine A, which the Historic Environment Records Office lists as a site of selected heritage inventory for Natural England, reference 7796, having high significance because of the preserved quality and the distinctive form of this intact sequence of medieval ridge and thorough earthworks. This is additionally a Historic Environment Record listed site, reference 24620. With the greatest of respect, does this council agree that it would be wise to withdraw this site allocation before approval of the local plan, thereby fulfilling its duties to protect and conserve this historic environment according to national and local policies, such as the requirements of the National Planning Policy Framework, where weight shall be given for the protection of historic assets, and the required sustainability assessment with its key test to avoid harm to heritage assets and their setting, and the local plan objective number one... objective number one, to protect the natural environment and heritage landscape, and local plan objective thirteen, to safeguard the county's heritage assets, and Sustainable Development Policy SD1, to maintain and enhance the county's environmental and heritage assets together with their setting, and the contents of other policies such as EM15 and 16, to protect historical and heritage assets. That completes my question, I have a short note if you feel this a moment for us.
I'm just going to pause, I'm just going to pause one moment, please, because this is a question and I just need to, we're just going to answer. Right, councillor Brown, okay, it wasn't indicated, thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr Drabbel has had the answer already from our planning officers, but I will repeat what he said previously in respect of these points. The site assessment work already includes archaeology and heritage as key factors, and heritage records form part of our assessment. The county archaeologist, that's the Leicester County Council archaeologist, has also put his consideration to his work, and the site and all of those in Wissendine were assessed as amber, which means that constraints can be mitigated. The examination process is a normal step in the local plan process, where such issues will be considered if the inspector's not confident, and the allocation of the site will present irrelevant or robust information, they will recommend a removal of the site. However, should this arise, the change would be a main modification without the whole plan being found unsound. So I think that's the response I would make to Mr Drabbel.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Now, of course, it's reverse order, do you have a supplementary?
May I make an observation first?
No, it has to be, it has to be scripted, because it has to be a supplementary question to the one you've asked, or the answer you've given.
Okay. Well, I'd like to echo the work that our officers have put into this, and I appreciate the response that you've made. However, would this, would this council agree with this supplementary question? That what is being proposed is a bit like saying one thing when you read all the policies, including the national ones and the local ones that I've just listed, and yet doing another thing? I'm interested in history and archaeology and preservation of our historic environments, and I hope you are too, as it says in the policies. Thank you.
Chair, that's a rhetorical question? Yes, indeed, it's a moral statement. So thank you very much, and we will... Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm just going to pause one minute. Members, we have been waiting for a little while, I want to continue, so I am going to adjourn the meeting for five minutes, and five minutes very precisely to give people a couple of breaks, so that we can...